Welcome to the City of Marshalltown City Council Meeting at the Public Library, Room 10, West State Street, our temporary location because of the tornado. Today's date is August 13, 2018, it's 5:30 PM. To whom do we owe the pleasure of having a gavel tonight? Well, thank you, appreciate it. Notice to -- the library had one, who would have guessed? Notice to public, the mayor and council will welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address for the record, and limit your time to -- time for remarks to three minutes or less so that others may be given an opportunity to speak. Speakers need to direct their -- speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any specific consular. It's the discussion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. We've been called to order. Will those who are able please join us on the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Here.
Hoot?
Here.
Very good, full house. Would any of the consulars or administrator like to make any preliminary comments?
I took some time this morning and I went up and down Main Street and talked to several of the business -- well, quite a few of the businesses that I found that were there and to some of the workers. Also, I took some time and talked to a couple of the insurance agents, and I'm really concerned. There's a number of the buildings that have insurance, but the insurance they have is only the appraised value of the building. And in talking to some of the contractors, that won't even clean the building up, let alone put a new roof or do something to the building to make it -- put it back where it was. I think the city's gonna have to take a hard look at that. We're gonna have to -- and Jenny, she's got all kinds -- she can write, she can write programs and write for grants and stuff, but that's down the road. These people needs us help today. And we, the city, since this is our city, are gonna have to take a firm approach to the way we want the downtown to look, and we're gonna have to put a little few bucks in their pocket, in our pocket, and we're gonna have to give our staff the ability to use that money so that when we go downtown, we see what we want to see and not a partial downtown because nobody's got the cash to do it. We have an opportunity here, I think, to make the downtown of Marshalltown into a really nice place. And I hope we don't blow it and don't do it. I think it's an opportunity of a lifetime, just like North Third Avenue, we have the opportunity. Since I've been in town, I've been told, well, you come in from the south, it's pretty nice, but if you come in from the north, it just doesn't look good. Well, let's not rebuild those houses then, let's go down and let's do some buyouts. And let's -- we have an opportunity, let's not blow it. And I -- Jenny, I know you want to work, I've heard a hundred people tell me, oh, Fidelity Bank, old bank, that would be so beautiful if it was restored. Well, he's got enough money from his insurance company to put a facade back, but he doesn't have a half million dollars to rebuild the front end of that building. And if -- I was riding up Center Street and I looked over there and I saw the facade of the old Fidelity Bank there, that'd be gorgeous. But somebody's gonna have to help him because he's gonna do what the insurance is paying. And they're gonna pay to put the facade back on and so he can open his doors and be in business. If we want the downtown to look a certain way, we're gonna have to figure out a way to do that and help them, help those people do it. I'll give myself a box.
Thanks, Mr. Lammer. Anyone else?
Your Honor, I also was out today surveying the neighborhoods of the north part of town, and I really want to compliment, in three weeks, it is amazing what has been moved, the vegetation, the debris that has been moved. We have moved literally mountains. I wish we knew the weight of it, well, I'm sure we do, but -- and I want to thank all of the city departments and the volunteers who have worked on that because it has been difficult work. But I am concerned and have some questions about the long-term planning for our residential areas. It seems like we're working toward getting long-term planning for our business areas, but I really want to look at long-term planning for our residential areas. I've drafted a letter that I wanted to pass to my fellow counselors that just states some of the questions that I have. They range from, you know, now that some of the volunteer agencies have gone out, how are we double-checking lists? How are we supporting people without insurance? Do we have a timeline for residents and businesses to work for getting rid of boarded-up windows and getting rid of debris? Some questions about the roofers or the people who are working in our community, you know, what's the plan if no action is taken toward a property? And a number of other concerns, how we can tie this, as Mr. Lammer said, into making our Third Avenue plan a viable plan, how we can make the rebuilding of those homes work to make that a better plan, plans for the Coliseum. I know we're doing rehab work right now, but how does that fit into the plans that have been presented to us previously? Do we have some economic development groups and is our Marshalltown economic development, are those folks actively looking for some developers who might want to develop affordable housing in the downtown area and the work of May? It is an opportunity, and I think that we're all doing, all of our city folks and our workers, I mean, they're doing their jobs without a doubt. They're doing more than their jobs. I think that I would say I would like us to discuss at a future time these issues and perhaps put together a long-term planning commission that then reports back to the council and works with the city, but also has outside folks on this as well. Because, again, I know Jessica, Justin, and Michelle, they've got their hands full with the infrastructures of our city that we're working with. But I think we really need to take into account the neighborhoods and the people that are involved in this as well. So I present that to you in hopes that we can put that forth for discussion at a later date or establish a long-term planning committee that will help tie some of these questions and put them together.
Thank you much. And thank you again, as I've said publicly, for all the work you're doing and your award. It's been phenomenal. Any other consulars wish to comment?
I will say that last week I was put in touch with the Tupelo, Mississippi mayor, who happens to also be a trial lawyer, and they went through a much worse tornado and had a lot more deaths than we did. There's an organization that connects mayors to mayors that have been through it, and so I intend to be a mentor in the future to other people that go through this. And they, down there, they used overlay districts for their neighborhoods, and that worked very well. If the neighborhood wanted to have an overlay district, they would do that, so it's something that we can look into. Hearing no, seeing nobody else raise a hand, let me read to you some prepared remarks. As opposed to at home, I get the last word here when we do the council comments. It's been more than three weeks since our community experienced this worst disaster, and the recovery has been impressive. Many thanks need to go out to the multiple non-governmental agencies like Habitat for Humanity, Team Rubicon, RSVP, MICA, The United Way, a whole slew of churches and others who are coordinating the efforts to meet the needs of the individuals impacted by this tornado. Many thanks also need to go out to a number of groups that have helped the city in the cleanup of the storm debris. Last week, the city of Des Moines had 15 employees and equipment that we saw all over town dedicated to Marshalltown and helping our community recover. This is only six short weeks after they experienced their own record-breaking flooding. The Iowa DOT and Marshall County have also stood with us and helped us with the debris cleanup. We've also seen a number of smaller communities have been sending people to our area with equipment in the weeks that followed. It's been awe-inspiring to see, to have your neighbors reach out and offer you help when you need it. As we put together the agenda for tonight, it was clear that there were a lot of items relating to the long-term recovery of downtown specifically. What I want to make clear is that city council members and I recognize that this disaster has impacted more than just downtown and that on a daily basis, our city staff have been doing all things necessary to ask for additional aid and identify other resources to bring into the community to help the residents impacted by this disaster and businesses outside of the central business district. We will continue to do this until we have exhausted all possible options. Tonight, however, the council will consider some impactful items related to the recovery in downtown specifically. I'd like to thank the Iowa Economic Development Authority, the U.S. Economic Development Administration, and the Martha Allen Ty Foundation for being able to quickly come together to identify resources and ways that we can ensure downtown Marshalltown is a more economically vibrant area than it has ever been. Marshalltown strong.
That's the end of the prepared remarks. Before we go to the consent agenda, I think we've had some adjustments to it that I'd like Jessica to address.
Yes, we are reducing the total amount of the bill list to $2,615,555.58. We have pulled the payments to our tree vendors pending some more recalculation of costs, and so we felt that it was best to get it right the first time and not have to try and go back and make some supplemental payments. So we're gonna withhold those payments from this meeting pending some further discussion on those. And so you have the new list, bill list, in front of you, I believe, with those items marked with a check mark, which have been removed in the new dollar amount that is there.
With that amendment, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Second. Very good. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoot?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Lammer?
Yes. I have one question, Mr. Mayor. Will we get a value? We got a list of all the vehicles damaged. Will we get a value on them from somebody someday?
Yes.
How much worth?
Yes, yes. So those are offers that we will be accepting now that action has been taken, so I'll get that information to you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, would you read those items?
Approve the regular council meeting minutes of July 23 and special council meeting minutes of July 30. Approve bill list in the amount of $2,615,555.58. Assume the building permit report for July. Resolution approving contract signed by the mayor pursuant to the declaration of the state of public emergency beginning July 19. Resolution allowing existing transient food merchants to sell in one location more than seven days per calendar month due to the declaration of the state of public emergency beginning July 19. Resolution declaring vehicles totaled by the 7/19 tornado as surplus property and authorizing sale and disposal thereof. Resolution approving the purchase of a 2018 Dodge Durango SUV to replace a total vehicle in the fire department. Resolution setting hold of carrying on August 27 regarding an interlocal grant agreement for the Iowa Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program. $20,765 to 15 percent with Marshall County to assist with law enforcement programming or equipment purchases notifying the college of the grant award and proposed use of federal funds.
Thank you. Onto item G, would you read the first motion, please?
A motion to approve change in TC's liquor license to increase the outdoor alcohol service area August 25th and September 13 for fundraising.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Sorry, I don't know who TC is, is there an address that that's located?
On North Third Avenue.
Just now, the rumors I've heard.
Thank you, now I know.
Have a question?
Fire.
When they do this, they would have a fenced-in area to extend their outdoor service area? Is that the requirement?
I, they've done it before in the past, I don't recall if it's fenced in or not.
Other questions or comment? Any public comments? Roll call, please.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoot?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Lammer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Please read motion G2.
Transfer of Orkheim license for July 5. Motion to ratify the civil hearings approval to move the Orkheim Outdoor Service liquor license on August 10 and approve the transfer for August 17 to the designated public areas at 13th Street and to RS Dover, 3809 South Center Street, August 24.
Move for approval.
Second. Discussion or questions?
Same question. Is that, are you allowed just to wander around 13th Street area with a drink pointed down at this activity?
In the designated areas would include the parking lot and West End Park.
They have hosted that in the past too, have they not? 13th Street has been a place where.
And it was the July 5 last week as well.
Yeah, the last two weeks.
Any other questions or comments or public comment? Roll call on this one.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoot?
No.
Isla?
Yes.
Lammer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carrie, would you read motion number three, please?
Approve tree general licenses, Bowler &amp; Gill, Top Notch, and Wolf Creek Stump Grinding.
Solicited motion to approve.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Discussion or questions?
Can you explain the permitting process? What's required, you know, what do they have to provide?
Sure. It requires $300,000 of general commercial liability, $25 permit fee, and council approval for tree general licenses.
Other questions or comments? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoot?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Lammer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Carrie, on to item H, which is resolutions. Madam Clerk, please read the first one.
Resolution approving 2018 amendment to the agreement with Marshalltown Central Business District.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move for approval.
Second.
Erin Buzzbees, on behalf of the MCVD, I know there's a lot of businesses out there like me that you, right after it happens, you assess it, assess the damage, you turn everything you can into the insurance process, you let that do its thing, and then you look at a plan of action. And many of the cases that we've heard, there are significant gaps between what insurance will cover and the scope of work that's necessary to keep our downtown beautiful and to rebuild it. As a Main Street community, we have access to design resources, technical expertise, and funding avenues provided by Main Street Iowa and the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Based on what we've heard from IEDA and Main Street Iowa, there is significant funding available, specifically this funding that is to provide, to fill that gap between what insurance will cover and the scope of work necessary to bring back the standard that we want in downtown Marshalltown. You know, the primary challenge right now is to really touch everybody, find out where the needs are and how we can help. But MCVD is up to the challenge in helping our downtown building and business owners pull together as much funding necessary to keep our historic downtown strong. Our operations primarily are funded through memberships and donations from downtown businesses and building owners, but considering the state repairs, it's not the right time to ask. So we need to bridge that gap until our downtown can recover. The city has allocated $40,000 for downtown improvement grants this fiscal year in well funding. In the past, in a normal year, we've seen significant impact from that, but unfortunately, this is not a normal year, and it will take a lot more than that $40,000 will make a significant dent in what's needed right now. So our recommendation is to reallocate the $40,000 to MCVD operations, which will allow us to provide membership for all downtown businesses for the year, and this funding ensures that MCVD can maintain an operation and can aid downtown when downtown means us most. So the primary challenge right now is to get businesses back up and going as soon as possible, but equally as important is the long-term success and the long-term beauty and health of our downtown. Between partnerships of Main Street Iowa, the city and the community, we're up for the challenge to help rebuild Marshalltown and its downtown stronger than ever. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Any other comments?
I have a question. Yeah, Erin?
Yes.
What's the timeline, once you talk to everybody and you figure out what that gap is, what's the timeline for those people to get that money?
Yeah, it's really the grant process and how quickly we can get that coming in.
Okay, because some of them I talked to today, they have enough, they have enough money to clean it up, but they don't have enough to put the new roof on.
Right.
So they need the new roof now, not when the grant comes 10 years from now or whatever. So what, how quick can you get them money? We're hoping two. Two weeks?
Jenny Eter, Director of MCVD, 60 East Main. We're hoping that this is a very quick, in fact, I spent all day with Tim Reinders from the state, working with DeShawn Zhang from Ocean City and Black Tire Bike and McGrathers, and they're all saying the same thing, they need this money quickly. And so, grant process, they're assuring me, once that comes through the city contracts, et cetera, then there could be as quickly as a two-week turnaround. So we're hoping, you know, how these processes go, we're hoping to have it within less than 30 days. So I think that's a fair statement.
Okay, thanks.
And also, they're hoping to allow us to have a time for a historic architect to be on board as well, and that person will also help that process and help the city and MCVD prioritize what's important, who can we get up and running, and what buildings need the most help, and what projects can we get done the quickest?
Question here.
Jenny and Erin, what areas do you expect this $40,000 to cover? What are we looking at here? Are we looking at stability? Are we looking at inclusion? Are we looking for grant opportunities, like you've mentioned here, to garner some outside funding for buildings and for businesses? What are we looking at here?
Yes, all of the above.
All of the above.
Yeah.
Anything else?
$40,000 will go to operating costs, but also allow us to provide services to everybody in the district, not just members, not just a few people. Everybody that needs something, we hope that we will be able to address them by giving them resources, information, connect them to people that can help, all of the above. And also, if there's any grants to be written, you know that I'll be writing those, and looking at grants that we've never accessed before. It's gonna take everybody's help and everybody's money to do this, and it's just me and all of our wonderful volunteers, but it's a lot of work, as you know, so it's gonna take, it's gonna take some help.
Thank you, good evening, council. It's Marla Greenbaum from Marla's Headliner on Main Street, 118 West Main. I have some questions about $40,000 that you were allotting to the CVD. I've always been, if you remember my votes when I was on council, I'm a true believer in the CVD, I'm a believer in the grants, the historical part of downtown, and we need those funds definitely now of all kinds to help us. My concern is, you have not earmarked how that $40,000 is gonna be used. Is it gonna go for salary increases? Is it gonna go for helping the businesses? I think you need to step back and actually earmark how those funds are given to that department. I absolutely owe a great gratitude to the chamber and to others that have helped us along the way downtown. We're gonna come back, we are strong, but I think of now of all times, you've gotta be aware of how you're handing funds out to different organizations.
Other public comment? Let's call the roll.
Who?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Lammer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie, would you read resolution number two, please?
Resolution approving a kind agreement with Bolton &amp; Mink for Highway 14 traffic and access management study and accepting funding to the Iowa Department for the study.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Discussion or questions?
I'll just do a little brief introduction of this item. This was something that was going to come before you, well, before there was a tornado imagined, and one of the next things to do that the DOT would like us to do in order to move forward with any improvements on that section of Highway 14 from, I think we're talking about from State Street to Riverside Drive with this specifically. There's some traffic counts needed and some further traffic data, as well as then a required access management study. As you'll think about that section, there are a lot of driveways in that area, the state always has concerns with the number of entries onto the state right-of-way. And so, in order to do this study, the state is proposing to pay for 50% of it because it is their cost. I will say that Greg made a valiant effort to try and get us some further funding, but they would not move up over 50%. And that's Greg Broussard with Bolton &amp; Mink, if you have any questions specifically about the study.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Isla?
Yes.
Lammer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Carrie, would you read resolution number three, please?
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of a Martha Allen Ty Foundation grant for a downtown redevelopment master plan in the amount of $100,000.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, questions?
Michelle Spottheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Yeah, before you, you have a resolution authorizing the acceptance of $100,000 from the Martha Allen Ty Foundation. This would be to complete work on a downtown redevelopment plan, so just as we've been talking about so much this evening, the need for planning for the future and to make sure that our downtown is in a position where we want it to be and grow is very critical, and it's important to get started quickly. The Ty Foundation was fortunate, we have that, that they recognized that need as well and were able to provide this award. So I would recommend accepting that graciously so we can get started on getting a downtown plan in order. Certainly, that process will involve the owners and the public and the consultants to engage in that work, to assess and look at codes, to look at plans, to look at our future down the road. So I think this is a necessary step, it's been since 2006 when we did our last plan. So we're in a much different position today, and we need to figure out how we're able to accept this.
It's also my understanding that it will allow the city to ask for matching grants from another agency.
Can I ask, what is the timeline of the process for this master plan?
What I would generally be looking at right now, what we have discussed, is if we can get a contract awarded and started by October 1st, that we would likely be looking at about a six-month process to go through that planning effort. And so certainly we'll start to see some things that happen quickly, and so people can make actions. I know everybody's, of course, looking to make decisions quickly, and that's where some of the work that MCVD is doing. and that's where some of the work that MCVD is doing will coordinate. But this will look at maybe beyond that initial scope need of what happens to my building today or my business today, for what is our future.
Is the encouragement to the business owners, I know their goal, I would assume, is to get back up into business, be creating income. So is it do whatever it takes to get back into business, to get running again, and then we'll have hopefully more funds and more better plan next summer so that we're able to then continue and complete the plan? Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're going to have a combination of all that happening. So you're going to have activity. Obviously, we want those businesses to get active and to be able to reopen and to continue to have that income coming in while recognizing that there may be opportunities that they want to undertake in the future that they can't do right now. And so a plan will allow us to identify those. It'll also allow us to identify areas where maybe we find businesses aren't going to continue or buildings that do have to come down. What are the future possibilities for those spaces? So it'll be looking at, you know, what is our existing situation as of today and as of the next couple of months versus where do we want to be? And where are opportunities for us to grow? You know, where are the opportunities for redevelopment, second story housing, which has always been one of our things? You know, these type of things that happen to us are times when we can start to look at those and to identify funding options for down the road. I think it's important to recognize that we all know that there is a need for financial aid during these times and we've been working very hard on the state and federal level to figure out where those funds can come from. I think it's important to know that those funds, even though coming from state and federal sources, are not just open checkbooks to do whatever and they do still have a lot of criteria and guidelines and things that have to be followed. And so we'll be doing our best to work through those. We've had some really good conversations with those agencies about where are areas that we have some flexibility versus what are things that have to be done no matter what? And so it's not always as simple as just, we know you have a gap and here's some money to fulfill it. Sometimes it is, but we'll be working to figure out those opportunities too. Thank you.
So do you have somebody in mind so we can get the contract signed and get moving on this?
We will do a request for qualifications for professional services on this and we'll be sending it out to many of the consulting firms that have put in submissions in the past and recently on projects. We're hoping to get that out this week.
Shorten the timeline?
Yeah, to get things moving and get stuff back before you at your September 24th meeting.
I can't imagine anybody voting no on this. Is there anybody objecting to taking a $100,000 gift to help with planning? Let's call it a roll.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gaudi?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie, thanks to the Thai Foundation for its quick response. Would you read our next resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing the city Housing and Community Development Department to submit a grant application to the Economic Development Administration for a downtown redevelopment master plan.
I move for approval.
Second, Your Honor.
We'll go with Martin on that second.
All right.
I heard him first. Any comments or questions? Just briefly.
Briefly, yeah. So with your prior approval, that now is able to match this application with the EDA. Again, we were approached by the EDA with some opportunities for how can they be of assistance and where can their funds come into play? And it was brought to us that this would be an opportunity. So they have a very quick application round that's kind of an open application and so it's very able to get into that. And so we're hoping to hear very quickly. They do have about a 60-day window on awards, but that allows for all the process to undertake and we can still get started with the request for qualifications and doing some of that light work. They just can't release the funds until that certain point. So I'm very hopeful for this $100,000 to come from the EDA to partner with the Thai Foundation funds and produce a very complete thorough plan for us for downtown areas.
About how much do you expect a plan to cost, based on like 2006?
We would be estimating that the full $200,000 between these two awards would go towards that plan.
And more, or is that about what it would cost?
That's where, that's where our budget, we're not asking for the council to allocate any other funds to go towards this effort. So it would be $200,000 at this point that has to be accounted.
And one thing I do want to mention, you know, as we were looking ahead at what areas we study next after Highway 14 or Third Avenue, State Street was specifically one of those areas. And so what we had intended, a scope of work looking at, you know, traffic and safety issues along State Street, that is all going to be part of this scope of work as well, which gets us to those higher dollar amounts because we're really adding quite a bit in there. And then talking about Lynn Street and Church Street as part of that whole concept as well. So it is, it is a very large scope of work that we're going to ask to be completed, but it's going to be very comprehensive.
We're also looking at this area, is part of our opportunity zone is within this area? And so that is one of the kind of key factors that will hopefully increase our eligibility for the funding through EDA is the potential for opportunity zone activity to take place as well as results.
Back to the Thai Foundation. Karen Gregory is here and she's our director of it. She and I have been on the email chain to know that the Thai Foundation family members are donating their personal grants. I knew I should not have waited in there. But several of them have grants that they're allowed to make personally and they simply just directed them all to the relief. It's quite a family. Any other questions or public discussion? I think I have my 23rd interview today and I didn't choke up with the alcoholic radio, fortunately. Most of them I have. Let's call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gaudi?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carrie, great, thank you. Would you read our last of the resolutions, please?
Resolution authorizing an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for Community Catalyst Building Remediation Program Grant for remediation of buildings within the Marshalltown Central Business District.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
I'll talk about this one as well. I was going to say, I think there's one more resolution after this, too. Yep. I think you're ahead a bit, we're still on the bottom of page three. But this is a resolution that was referenced. Iowa Economic Development Authority, specifically the Main Street program, came to the city very quickly and just said, this is nothing we've ever experienced before with the Main Street program. And after being here on the ground, they realized that there is a lot of work to be done. And so they have, last year was their first year for this program called a Community Catalyst Building Remediation Program Grant Fund, where they had awarded $1.8 million to a number of projects across the state, which was up to $100,000 per building. We don't have a total amount that we're applying for. After seeing the need on the ground, they realized that that's probably not a wise thing to set out a total dollar amount now, that we're going to see how this goes. But these are the funds that would be allocated to hopefully filling some gaps on some buildings. One of the things that the IEDA is also doing, that Jenny sort of hit on, is that they are, outside of these funds, hiring a historic preservation architect, who I think their request for proposals is due on the 15th and they hope to have it turned around in one day as to who that individual or company will be. And that entity will be assigned to Marshalltown for six months to basically gather the data and put together sort of the prioritization to award the funds. And so this is a grant that the city will be applying for and all these funds will be running through the city. But this is, of course, a joint effort with the Marshalltown Central Business District utilizing the historic preservation architect to help make some decisions about where those funds go.
Any questions or further comment?
So, excuse me, do I understand that then the funds would be six months down the road because of the process, the application for, it's immediate application, that the funds would come after the historian has worked with us?
We, it's, I have no idea on timeline at this point. As they've said, this is not something that they've done before, so I'm not sure how quickly those funds will be coming in. Or, you know, it probably depends on us, too, as to whether or not we want to see a list of all possible options with the preferred ranking before making some decisions or whether you want to rely on the expertise and experience of the historic preservationist architect as well. So there are still many, many things to be worked out in the process. This is new for them as well and so they've advised us that there might be some things that we need to request waivers of rules from them as we go along as well. So it's new for all of us, but they did basically come to us within the first week and said, this is, this is something where we can help. Thank you.
Public comment? Rule call.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gaudi?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carrie, and would you read the real last resolution?
Resolution approving policy on examination and copying of public records and appointing a lawful records just voting for the city of Marshalltown. The last time the council renewed the Freedom of Information Act resolution was back in 2008, 2009. This has been booked up by our current legal team and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Questions or discussion? Public comment? Rule call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gaudi?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isla?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, let's go on to the discussion items. First one is police inquire building cost updates.
I am the senior finance director. So took the information you provided till the last time and we look towards the bottom of the page, you'll see that the stormwater improvements amount has been taken out and just put as a footnote, no A. So the stormwater improvements of $225,000 will be paid out on the stormwater in 2016, A bond funds. There hasn't been too many changes in the actual contracts. So right now we're looking at a surplus of $918,000 that hasn't been committed yet from the police inquire building. Any questions?
Thank you. I guess we can invite public discussion on that one. Okay, let's go to item number two of discussion, police inquire building project requests.
Yes, this was an item that was tabled from the July 23rd meeting to this meeting. We wanted to do a cost update before we introduce some other project requests to you for three different items. The first would be landscaping. And if you pull up the memo or you have the memo in your packet, it will kind of show what's being talked as far as landscaping. One of the things to note is, as we were getting ready to go out to bid, landscaping was one of those items that was removed from the bid at that point just to, you know, we weren't sure exactly what things we're going to come in at. So this would be adding things back. What your package shows in that sort of outline of the building is that everything in green. And I don't know if you have a color copy or if it shows up very well in the black and white, but everything in green is what we're talking about with a $40,000 landscaping budget. And so I believe those areas would be sodded with the remaining areas that are really not publicly visible from the street to be a spray seed with some covering over it to get a good start. And so that's, that's why the price tag, it's not a small area where sod is proposed. And so do you want me to go through all three of them before our discussion? Okay. The next one on there is $55,000 for public art. This is something that we had talked about, kind of, you know, leading, leading up to the project, but was always sort of established of, let's just wait and see where things are. We are in a comfortable position right now, budget-wise, where we can have that conversation. And so in talking with the Arts and Culture Alliance and with Michelle Spahnheimer about the way things worked with drills, is there was sort of a set dollar amount that you were going to tell your final artist to work with, but then there was some money allocated on the front end to provide some stipends for whoever you narrowed it down to, to basically provide some concepts of what they were proposing, as well as then to, you know, make any site preparations. So there is still going to be a planned concrete pad out in front of the building. There is also areas inside of the building where there would be potential as well. And so nothing's been decided, but if this is something you'd like to be moved forward with, we actually, the Arts and Culture Alliance had said this would be something that they felt they could help us with significantly in terms of workload and making this happen. And then the final item on there are sidewalks. This was also an item that was not included in the bid, but not because it was pulled. This is a requirement, obviously, to put in sidewalks, but it was something that was overlooked in the final plans before we approved them and put out to bid. So $70,000 is a sidewalk estimate. As you know, it's a corner. There's two different street frontages and they're, they're big frontages. So that's the reason for the high cost there. And any questions, I'm sure Justin or I would be happy to answer.
Your Honor, I, I don't have any problem with the landscaping. I'm glad we're not seeding wild flowers. I had, I just had to throw that. And the sidewalks, we don't have a choice on them. I'd like to see us wait on the public art till the building's done so that, so whoever we hire to do this work can see what they have to work with. You know, all we got is pictures now, but once the building's setting a little higher than what the pictures show, and I'd like it, I'd like to get the building done so they can see what they have to work with first. I don't have a problem with it, but I just, I think it'd work better if they saw the finished building first. That's just me.
Any other discussion?
Your Honor, will this be on the next agenda?
So I think what I was looking for tonight was the motion in a second to establish budgets, which then we would start including in things. We can bring it back on a formal resolution to establish those budgets if you would like us to as well.
I guess I'm a little bit concerned about bringing things up in discussion and from that point on, offering a motion. If that's what it takes to get it into a formal state, then I guess I'd be for it. But I'd say it's a recommendation at this stage that it be on and some consensus of the council to do so.
That's where I would prefer a motion with a vote, just so that it is something formal. We can bring back a resolution to the next meeting, but moving forward with whether it's A or C, as Councilmember Lamer suggested, or A through C, that at least gives Justin the ability to begin directing some work for historic construction to start preparing some different bids on things.
Michelle?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Just a comment related to the public art and the difference between maybe starting afterwards. Sometimes we think of, oh, we should wait till everything's done. We found with both of our Great Places projects, ECHO and Drills, that there probably would have been some benefit had some of that process been started early on because when you're running maybe electrical for lighting or extra support, if something's going to be hanging from the ceiling, for example, there would have been advantages for the artist to be involved in some of that work before it was all installed and done and then you're redoing concrete or you're redoing, putting an outlet where maybe you hadn't done one before or something of that nature. So just something to consider that sometimes it's actually for the artist, the feedback we got is it's nice for them on the, on the earlier side of things to be a part of some of that work so that they can plan accordingly as well.
I was also thinking that when there's a grand opening and we have a celebration and the media are there, won't it be nice to have it all finished? And that's the image and it's all just done.
If it's like the other art pieces, they had grand openings and the art pieces- and the art pieces didn't show up for a year, so I don't think that's a big issue.
And just to clarify, in looking at timeline and things, as we were initially setting this out, we were going to be looking at a timeline that extended beyond our initial occupancy and probably a grand opening. The other thing to think about in terms of grand openings and things is we're going to be moving in in the middle of the winter, and you want to save your grand opening until the spring, when we have green grass hopefully, and see what things look like at that point. So, either way, you know, Michelle brought up a, a point, but our timeline is probably not one that it would be ready by the time occupancy would be taking place.
I do know historically too, on the Virginia, Art Henry Y Building was built, the very pretty artwork in the, in the very front of that was commissioned at the same time, so it wasn't placed when, when the Y opened.
Can I make a motion at this point, or is there a looking for?
Yes, I, I would like a motion, and we can come back with a resolution on the next council meeting to formalize whatever items you would want to set a budget for.
I would, I would make a motion to move forward with A and C, just at present time.
I have a second tab. Discussion? Public comment? Call or roll?
Goudy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
No.
Okay, Carrie? Me too. Welcome to the sex on vote experience.
Thank you.
Let's go on to item number three then, discussion about combining the Coliseum Commission and Park and Rec Advisory Board.
Yes, this was an item that we had been working on for a, a little bit. The Coliseum Commission, we had three terms expire at the end of 2017, and so we were looking at reappointments and thought this is probably a good time to determine whether or not the Coliseum Commission exists, or should exist in the future. Their charge, and what they were tasked to do, is to oversee operations and maintenance and capital improvements of the building, which is really something that Parks and Recreation staff is, is doing specifically. This is not to say that there is no role for, for veterans and the Veterans' Memorial Coliseum, but what the facility had become is a recreation facility, part of our Parks and Recreation Department in our city facilities, and had sort of moved away from a direct management role and operational role with a, a separate commission. There also exists the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which does work with the Parks and Rec Director to basically, again, make recommendations on capital projects and operations and programming to be offered in the Parks and Recreation Department. And so, there was some redundancy in having two meetings a month focusing on, you know, things that all fell under the same umbrella. And so, I do want to be very clear that this is not to diminish the role of the five, the five-member Coliseum Commission members and the service that they have done. And what is actually proposed here is that the, the two current members of the Coliseum Commission would be placed on the Park and Rec Advisory Board to finish out their current term, and then the, the mayor would be able to make any appointments when terms expire.
I could say the mayor's going to have a bias toward making sure that we have veterans on that Park and Rec Board.
Yes. For future, why don't we, if we're going to combine them, combine them, designate the two of the members, come from veterans, and that, that'll take care of that problem?
We, we can do that, because what, what I would be asking for you again is if you, if there's agreement that you want this move forward, or if you want this as a motion, would be a, a resolution coming to the next meeting that would really formalize what you want. And so, if you would want to see long-term setting of authority for there to be continuing of two veterans to be placed on the Park and Rec Advisory Board, we could certainly do that.
I would make that motion. Second. Further discussion or questions or public comment?
I was contacted by someone who had served on the board previously, and they were very concerned about diminishing the role of the veterans organizations, having a voice in the operation of the facility. So, it is something that I agree that if, if we're going to put forth the motion, that we make sure that that is stated, that veterans will continue to serve on it, and maybe provide some sort of a rotation even so the different veteran service groups are represented, and it's just not one or, or the other, but there are several of them that can have that representation over time. I understand the expediency of, of working under one organization, but I do want to make sure that we show the, the respect and the honor to our veterans as we, especially as we move forward and, and look at the Coliseum and our, our future planning of the city.
Thank you. Good points. Any public comment? Does anybody want to formalize the motion that they, what's second? Okay. I need more sleep. Well, let's call the roll.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, and our last and fourth discussion item is the landfill charges to the commercial entities from July 23 to August 4.
Yes, I believe some of you also got the same phone call that I got from a business owner who is questioning why commercial entities were not allowed to drop off debris at the landfill from July 23 to August 4 when it was free for residential debris. And so, that, you know, the, the landfill commission was the one who initially set things forth with the residential. My understanding and talking about what that meeting was is that was just an immediate sort of reaction to a known need that was there. As we further have talked through this, that the, the intent was that there would be insurance coverage that should come first on debris removal from properties. I've talked to a few different insurance agents who have said that it's typical for a commercial policy to have coverage for debris removal. So, if, we want to ensure that we're, we're truly covering a need that exists, not paying for something that somebody's already receiving an insurance payment for. One thing that I would like you to all keep in mind is that we have no way or no guarantee at this point of getting reimbursement on the residential fees from any sort of other outside entity, let alone bringing in the commercial entities and possible reimbursement there. However, if you would like to consider reimbursing of commercial fees which have been charged to entities, there's a few things that I'd like to recommend, probably first and foremost, that, that we can verify that the debris were properly disposed of according to DNR and OSHA asbestos requirements, that this is something that is very important when it comes to commercial properties, and it's something that I feel like we have at least a weekly meeting with somebody from the DNR, somebody from OSHA about asbestos. And so, we continue to put out as much information as we can from the city about the proper way to do things, but we don't always see compliance. And so, having compliance with that factor right there would be very important. Probably second would be, you know, dealing with the insurance question, that if somebody is insured, that if they could provide a copy of their policy, or some sort of verification from their insurance company or agent that states that they do not have debris coverage, debris removal coverage at some level, or if not insured, having basically a sworn affidavit of no insurance coverage to be signed. That, that, those would be things that would probably sort of minimize our risk in taking on expenses where there was insurance coverage already there, or where somebody just chose to go off, you know, sort of half-cocked and handle debris removal in a way that was not compliant with state or federal regulations. So, again, there's a, there's a way that I think we can do this in terms of reimbursement, but there's also, again, no guarantee if we reimburse somebody's costs that will ultimately be reimbursed.
Calling for a motion.
Yeah, I, I, whatever you would like to do.
When do we know start reimbursement would be like? It's a time I need to look on.
We would be waiting for a federal public assistance disaster declaration before we would know any further about that. And so, that could easily be probably another two to four weeks off.
Do we know, someone mentioned to me that they heard the mayor on the radio today, and I didn't hear it, so I'm, I'm just going to, going to ask, do we know what our, our thoughts are on getting the FEMA backing? Is it possible? Is it unlikely? Is it looking in our favor? There, there was someone who questioned after listening to you, and again, I didn't hear what was said, so someone just questioned, and they felt that maybe our chances were very low at getting that.
So, to, to be clear, there's two different kinds of assistance here from, from FEMA. And so, what we're talking about would be public assistance, public meaning not just the general public, but public entities, meaning city, county, other, school, district, others. So, that was the first one to, the state did have FEMA officials in last Tuesday to do some data verification in anticipation, I believe, of, of determining whether or not there was enough data and enough cost incurred to make that request. I can tell you that our 30th day of the disaster, and which is the time period for which, which the declaration has to be made, is Saturday. And so, I expect we'll know something more by the end of this week, but nobody has speculated to me one way or the other as to whether or not this is likely or not. So, I really have no way to provide guidance to any of you at this point as to whether or not something on the public assistance side is likely. We certainly hope so, because this has been something where we've incurred a, a great deal of costs in the debris cleanup, and having that assistance would be quite useful moving forward.
I have another question, and I know it's not a fair question to throw out now, but I would say, could we petition back to the landfill commission as to, I mean, I know they incurred costs of, of their personnel, their overtime, the amount of work and the materials that, that they did, an incredible amount. But, were, if we do not get any of that federal funding for that, do you go back with them and say, all right, could we work out a deal? Can we compromise? Can the landfill, you know, I think in some discussions earlier, there was some thought that the landfill could absorb some of those costs without, without affecting their bottom line, and could some of that not all have to come from the city, but some of it come from the landfill as well?
Without putting Mr. Goudy, Councilman Goudy on the bus?
I said, I don't mean to put you on the line, but I want you to consider it.
I would say that we would look at what all of our options are, and I would certainly see that would be, be an option where there would be further discussion with the, the landfill commission, but certainly all options would be on the table at that point. We'd be having a much larger discussion about that internally. We've been thinking about what are those other resources that we could probably pull from to help us cover the, the debts that we are incurring, if indeed there is no coverage for that.
That might be, part of my answer would be that you have to realize that, that, that we run that as a, as a business, and, and so, those 22 people along with Mr. Lamer and myself that are on the, the executive board would have to consider that as far as the operation. We don't want to shorten the cell life and/or not be able to pay for a new one. So, that being said, we have compassion for everybody in the, in the city. All of us live inside the city, so it's not that we're, we're sitting out here in, in judgment of, of not doing what's right or, or, or any of that. Some of these decisions that we made was on a Saturday afternoon after I'd been down to a meeting with JBS and, and with Sue, and we're putting feet to the fire, so to speak, to try to distribute millions of pounds of, of pork at that time. So, I called a special meeting of the executive board for the landfill, and some of these decisions came out of that meeting. First of all, because of the residents, and we realized that that was going to be first and foremost. Those people were going to try to start cleaning up their houses and everything, and, and we went through a couple phases there of, of checking with everybody, realized that that wasn't going to work, so we sent them all through and kept track of the, of the pounds coming through, and, and then just letting them back on a scale and, and leave without checking anything. Obviously, it would be impossible to check insurance policies and, and that whole mess, so we probably missed quite a few, but that being said, when we got to the commercial part of it, which a business owner had, had come forward, and so we started that discussion, Jessica and I, and, and what we wanted to do with that entity, and so, that's something that we would have to bring up to probably the whole commission. We can make it on our, with the executive board, we can make that decision and work with everybody involved to, to try to come up with a, with a compromise on, on tonnage fees and work with the city. I think that is kind of a separate entity to what we're
I agree.
really doing here. If we make that motion to one way or the other, depending on, on what the council feels we should do, then we can get to that, that point of, of finances, but.
I have a question for, do, we're a public, the, the landfills are public entity too. I hope they're including our costs for this rehabilitation in with their FEMA numbers, because it's a public entity, and we've got some pretty big numbers. And if I'm not mistaken, when the, the governor was here a week ago, or whenever it was, she told me, she told me and a, the couple of people in our group, that I asked her about FEMA, and she said the number was 3.2 million at that time, and they needed four. And she said there was a chance that you could use a, a small waiver and use some of the residential stuff to make it to four. And I don't know if they've told us that, that, but she told us that that night. So, that's where the numbers were then, and I figured we'd probably well over the four, especially when the, when the courthouse is at 15.5 million. You know, the, the courthouse alone puts us way over the top.
Unfortunately,
But it's covered.
Its insurance comes first.
Yes.
So, that's where it's looking at in terms of all of us, public entities, that we're very well insured. And so, it's looking like our deductibles are the only amounts that actually count on that side of things.
But our costs out there should be included in.
I'm, I'm not sure if those have been or not. I will email my contact to see if the landfill was included or can be included, but those numbers that you have have never been relayed to me from anyone at the state level.
Okay, well, those are the ones that, that the governor was talking about.
And to answer Councilor Cahill's question, the other mayors that I've talked to, including Cedar Rapids and Parkersburg and Tupelo, and then there's a handbook actually written by the town of Tupelo about how to handle these disasters, all told me that there's no way to predict FEMA or whether you're going to qualify, and the rules change quite a bit. So, it's, it's really hard to get a bead on that. Does anybody?
I would. I just was wondering what Mr. Kinser would recommend at this point.
Uh, my recommendation would be to just wait and see what happens with our public assistance declaration, and then revisit the issue at that point in time to, to see where we stand. There's just a lot of unknown where we are right now at this point in time.
And if we can, if, if, but if a commercial agent could prove that they don't have insurance to cover it, I don't think we ought to be, I, I think we ought to be helping them out. I really do.
Well, it definitely would help if the landfill ended, because of the simple fact that, like the residents, we would be placing that either as a charge to the hauler, depending on, or, or who, some of them have charge accounts, some of them don't. So, that being said, it would help Don at the landfill, when they come across the scale, if we know whether that's a bill that, we can always bill it to the hauler, and they bill it to the, to the business. But on the other end, if they do not have insurance to cover that, we would then put that on the disaster account that we have with the city. So, it's, it's important to, to, for us to find out where this, the bill is going to. And, and at the end, if the topic of, of money comes up. And at the end, if the topic of money comes up, then that would be through landfill and the city, would be to discuss that. But it would certainly help on the end of the billing part of it, who we actually bill it to when it come across the scale.
Just one clarification, Councilmember Gowdy. What I had proposed in here was just at the same timeframe that it was free for the residents from July 23 to August 4, that it would be things that had already been billed and had already gone through, not anything that would be new stuff coming through.
Okay. I'm sorry.
The understanding would be that the company would come with their insurance, or the lack of insurance.
And a bill showing that they've been charged, what they've been charged for as well. It would be a reimbursement, yes.
I don't know that we need that in a formal motion, if there's a consensus that that's how we ought to go forward, go wait until we get the declaration or not.
We can handle that. We can handle that out there.
Okay. And by the way, thank the two of you for serving on that commission, and thank the landfill for being so accommodating in a true emergency. It was incredible how fast you were able to open that up and help get JBS back up into operation. I'd also like to thank the city workers, who, you know, we've been this place from city hall, we obviously don't have a place to have the constabines. Thank you to the library for having us here, not just for these meetings, but also it's interesting to see the next room, where so many of the city workers have been able to hole up and get worked on. And the same thing with the public works building, a lot of people have adapted and adopt under straining conditions, and they've just done a marvelous job, so thank you for that. If there is no more discussion about landfill charges, let's go on to the final item, which is public comment. We're at that point where people may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda. Again, approach the microphone, state your name and address, limited to three minutes, unless apparently I get to authorize longer. I didn't bring my timer. And you may direct comments to the mayor and to the council as a whole. The mayor and consular are not engaged in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on these items raised in public comments. You're in order to comply with open meeting calls.
I have one.
Okay.
I have a question. We approved the resolution where you signed the contracts. Will we know, when will we get the numbers, how much money it is?
For the contracts that were on here tonight, so two of those were timed, or I think quite a few of them were time and material contracts, and one was a disposal agreement. There was one that was a time and material, which will be open ended until the scope of work.
The Coliseum?
No, that's the structural engineers. The disposal agreement had no dollar value, and then the three roofing contracts had a dollar value, that I believe. We can get you copies of those agreements.
Just like to know how much money we're talking about. Thank you.
Any public comment?
Marla Gredenbauer, 118 West Mead, Marla's Headliner. During the tragedy that we've all suffered in our downtown area, it's come to my attention, and I've gone out and I spoke with other business people. I was so frustrated. One day I called Lynn at the chamber. I've gone to one of the supervisors and spoke with them. I'd like the council and those people that are redeveloping, reassessing how we're going to use the downtown, if we could consider, and I know it's really hard for some of you to accept, but turning Church Street into a two-way street as we did years ago to State Street, it made it more accessible to our main street. The three main parking lots in our community are on Church Street. And so our businesses would have more access, it's more accessible to get to the courthouse if Church Street would be two-way. Might like to see Lynn Street as well. I'm told that there are not as many businesses on Lynn Street, and I'm told that in the residential area that it's too narrow with alternate parking. I think it could be worked with. I guess I'd ask you, and I know it's been brought before you numerous times, but to look at it through different eyes now, come sit downtown with us, watch where the people are coming from, and if you were a business owner downtown, how would those one-way streets affect you? Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Seeing no one rise, let's adjourn the meeting at 6:46 PM. Thanks for coming.